Okay, well, welcome to our committee home meeting of December 2nd. And this is our first committee of the whole meeting of the month. And I was thinking on the way over here a year ago, our meeting was council meeting where we welcomed councillor Shankar to our fold. And are you feeling any more comfortable now than you were a year ago, Laurie?
Yeah.
Good. You know what's going on, why don't you give your final? Okay, can I have approval of the agenda, please? And the recommendation is that the agenda be adopted as presented. Councillor Shankar, councillor Jasmine.
Not Jasmine.
Senior moment, I'll favor Kerry. Were there any declarations of interest this evening? None, we'll move right along. Presentations, there are no presentations this evening. We have one delegation with us. And that's the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation, Mike McDonald, executive vice president, patient care and community partnerships. And the ex or former, perhaps, president Trump, Prescott Foney, I want to add to that. Do you want to take the poll you want there? And here's your presentation.
I'll just start briefly. I'm Nikki from the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation. I just want to start by thanking you so much for having us here. I'm going to let Mike do the talking. I just want to let you know who we are. We're the fundraising arm for the Kingston Health Sciences Centre, which is the KGH site, Kingston General Hospital, as well as the Hotel Deuce Hospital site and Providence Care. Oh, there we go. We're here today to talk about scientific opportunities that are coming to our area and our regional hospitals for southeastern Ontario, which Mike is going to speak to. So I'll leave it to Mike. And thank you, friends.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us. Kingston Hospitals is certainly a Kingston hospital, but also serves the region. And the reason that we cover both from academic and referral center is from about Cardinal all the way to Brighton. And for neonatal, we cover as far as Ottawa. And for neurosurgery, any neuro problems, up into Peterborough, we cover James Bay as well. So we cover a very large area. The population is about 550,000 within the southeast Lynn and about three quarters of the Benin when you include all of the other neonatal and neurosurgery. And so, well, wrong way down. So our site is rich in history of two of the oldest hospitals in Canada. And the Kingston General site, actually, I think is the longest single-site ongoing hospital in Canada. It was actually home of the first government in Canada. Although rich in history, we do need to upgrade our facilities. They are badly in need of upgrading. And so the idea will be over the next eight years. And the reason it's going to take eight years is because we have to actually build a hospital within a hospital and run the hospital at the same time. So we're going to have to drop a number of buildings, move things out of them, drop them, rebuild them, build a tower, and then move back into the hospital areas. And that's the reason it's going to be taking such a long time is because of that. You can see that there's four wings that will need to be demolished. And so we're going to be getting a new emergency department. The one now is quite outdated. It doesn't meet the needs, care needs of today. One of the things is we need isolation rooms, things like that. We have very few of them, and it's actually, it really pulls patients up when they need to be admitted. We have no place to put them, so we end up in the halls. And the rooms themselves are not large enough to accommodate the teams that are required and the equipment that is required for them. And so the updated emergency department will give us the badly needed space along with the areas of equipment such as CAT scans, things like that. Surgical suites, they're probably a vintage of about 50 years old, 40, 50 years old. You can see on the top they have the green tile. Some people bathrooms have the green tile, but the ORs are small and they do not accommodate the teams and the equipment. For instance, robotics. We purchased our first robot that does surgery, and these rooms just do not accommodate it. So we're needing to do kind of an intermediate upgrade so that we can put the robots in to do the operation. So again, the air statement is they're not up to where they should be, and the new modern facility will have all of the ORs that we need and the space that we need to move forward. Women, childrens, again, the neonatal unit, the delivery rooms, and the laborers will all be upgraded to accommodate the new standards and to deliver the care that we need to. The neonatal unit right now is undersized, and we actually have, sometimes it's very, very cramped in there if you've ever been there or had a family member be there. So this will give us the much-needed space. Again, the labs, the new lab accreditation systems, we're able to now provide most of the lab services for southeastern Ontario, including Rockville, actually. So the Rockville Hospital is managed by Kingston Health Sciences Centre with the staff that work there are from Rockville. But the new standard is specialized testing. We're now able to do it within Kingston Health Sciences Centre, but again, the area that it's in is quite cramped. And so we started to modernize it, but we will need more space to do it and the infrastructure to allow us to put all of the equipment that's required. So I think, Nick, you're going to go over what it means for Prescott?
So as Mike said, basically why we're here tonight, given that we are a regional hospital, we do serve, last in 2018, we saw about 1,800 visits from Prescott residents. And actually, interesting note was 800 patients in general, which is about 20% of your population that are accessing services at KHSC. So what this redevelopment will mean, and it's really purpose-led, the new towers, that when you're coming in from out of town, if you're pregnant and you have to wait, you don't have to drive for 50 minutes back down the 401 to wait. There'll be a waiting area, there'll be a place, God forbid, if your baby's sick and you're in the NICU, you'll have a space to do laundry, stay overnight. Right now, it's just an open bay, like Mike said. So parents can't stay with their baby. With the new redevelopment, there'll be an area where people can stay. It's a cost savings, too, if you're coming from out of town. The new surgical suites, as well, like Mike said, will accommodate for up-to-date and cutting-edge technology, but also have new waiting rooms where, again, people coming out of town will have a place to wait for their family more comfortably. So it really is a partnership. We're really recognizing the need that we are a regional hospital, not just a Kingston, not just a fellow of Rockville, it's everybody. So it really is a partnership. So are, am I going backwards? So unfortunately, patient visits are increasing significantly since 2008, we saw about 1,800, like I said. So based on our usage formula, our ask for counsel is about just over $42,000 over five years, which is a pledge of about $8,500 a year for five years in support of the redevelopment based on Prescott residents' usage of the current facilities. And that's all right. So thank you for your time.
I'd just like to thank for saying that we're very lucky to have Queen's University, and we attract some of the greatest minds for research and care. And if we're going to continue to draw in and hire world-class physicians to deliver world-class care, we're going to need the facilities to deliver it then. And so far none, and we're delivering world-class as far as neurosurgery goes and as far as stroke care, neonatal, all of those things. So we're very fortunate in this area to have that, as well as, you know, working with Ottawa as well. But again, these facilities need to be upgraded to make sure that we retain the greatest minds to continue on and do that research for care in the future.
Thank you very much, Mike, Nikki. Do you have any questions, Laurie? Councillor Jasmine?
Firstly, just thinking, we are so lucky to have a hospital like Kingston, so close to us, only an hour away. I know in the case with when Rockville descended and they provided stats, because we found out only later that the, because we kind of wondered about how they gathered for data, and we found out later that they used the dinosaur of Prescott, Ontario, which Mike would know is Augusta and it's Riverview Heights and it's Johnstown and it's whatever. So it skewed the data quite a bit. Do you, would you happen to know these stats of the 1807, if that came from just Prescott? But again, would it be inside the Prescott town limits of our taxpayer base, or would it be the address of Prescott, Ontario?
Be the postcode KO, forgive me.
Fontio.
Actually, I remember that. Kay, we want to.
You probably remember phone numbers.
I remember the phone number, yeah.
So the data they pull is based per, so what we have, we get it from camera, his name is based per city. So when a patient comes in and their health card scanned, it would be resident, whatever the Prescott area address.
Yeah. So that could be perhaps the same issue, you know. Thank you.
And a attached question, I might say, are you approaching councils, Edward, or Cardinal, or Augusta as well?
Cardinal, no, as we have to go as far as Cardinal, I believe. We've approached, we've tried to approach Rockville, the United Counties, we've already had a commitment from, but no, not Cardinal.
But that's something we should consider.
Yeah, definitely.
The share on this is 90-10. So the government will put up 90% of this, and the other 10% needs to come.
It's the same as Rockville. I think what, if I can, Councillor Jasmine, what you're doing is KOE takes in the area around Prescott. So if you have 1,800 people coming to the hospital in the course of a year, you could have 900 from Prescott and 900 from around us. So if you're asking, has the pony up $40,000, some $1,000, perhaps, if you delegate a little bit closer, you might find that our two neighboring township should be contributing half that amount. And I'm not saying that that's what they should be contributing, but we've just found in the past that sometimes the word Prescott has either positive or negative implications when we're looking at the area for us, or sense of why. So if that's something you would do in that area, go back and do it on.
Thank you.
Should be glad to do that as well. I mean, we've gone to a number of town councils throughout the southeastern Lynn, but now with that information, we certainly look at that.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Big job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for coming tonight. I think you might, great presentation. It's a tricky one for us. You know the background on all of this, of course. We did commit to Rockville last year. Well, that's a lengthy commitment of 300,000 over 10 years, basically, that is a number there. And we did discuss at that time designating Rockville as the sole hospital we would contribute to. Although I don't believe that was actually ended up, I'm not sure that was actually passed through motion because we ended up with some more discussion, and it came back more to yearly contribution without that attachment. So we're not bound by that commitment, although I think a lot of us here on the table did at least sort of agree to that as the concept, because the problem is it opens up. I mean, it's Kingston, Kentville, Winchester, so we're really spreading all different areas. With that said, this would seem to be a very reasonable number. I'm not saying I support or don't support it, but it would seem to be a reasonable number, but it's also really good point made by the chair and councillor Jasmine that those numbers did kind of lead beyond the boundaries into just the general 925 area around Prescott and the KOE 1TO. I know there's a 1T1 now in Johnstown, so it's separated a little more because of the...
This is a KOE.
Yeah, so you'd have to, we really like, I think, just speaking for myself, it'd be nice to see some more of the data, to see where the number is, and also determine, because we really should be giving this out on a, I would say, a fairly standardized formula within hospitals. So if we were to entertain this, we'd have to make sure the logic would somehow work with the Rockville request as well. But I will say, just from a personal perspective, it's always interesting when this comes up because I had both my mother and my mother-in-law care their cancer and heart, and the care was, unfortunately, both situations turned into an end-of-life situation, but the care that was offered was absolutely stellar. So despite what happened there, at the end of it all, I just, I think the world of that whole system in Kingston, personally, as much as I would like to sit here and say I have to be bound by the dollars on this, this is a tough one for me emotionally because simply I know how much that hospital does mean to us here in Prescott. So this is something, obviously, we're not going to make a decision on it tonight, we need some more data. But just speaking for myself, I want to thank you for representing the hospital, and the hospital system as well in Kingston for how much it does do for us here and across the region. So for me anyways, it's something I'm really going to think about, and if there's a way I can come around to supporting this, I definitely would. I'm just concerned about the implications of us supporting as a small municipality, four or five regional hospitals. It's just, it's very difficult for us financially. But I did want to thank you so much and make sure that that's underlying what great care you do offer the region.
Okay, thank you. It's been a pleasure coming down. I look forward to coming down all week, so it's nice to see you again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome. So can we ask you to delve into that and perhaps get back to our staff with a closer...
A breakdown, yes.
A breakdown of what number of people are actually coming from Prescott. And once we have that, as Major Todd, Major Todd.
You're struggling.
Yeah, well, once we have that figured, then, as Major Todd mentioned, we have made a major commitment to the hospital in Rockville, but I don't recall it being classified as our home and hospital. The way I remember it is it is our hospital, Joyce Major Hospital, closest hospital, any number of words describe that. But as Brett mentioned, in my own family, we've had people that have been rushed to Kingston with a positive outcome. So it's probably, I suspect, the second hospital that affects the people here in town. So if you get back to that for that in your own time, then we'll hold it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, you're going to go through an awful, awful project. Mine, kind of, is eight years of construction, and you're going to lose a little bit of parking, and the rooms up here are going to lose their view.
Yeah, it's going to be quite entertaining. I think it's the largest one in Kingston's history, actually. The Providence Care, which is a beautiful hospital, was green space. And so building a hospital in green space is a little bit quicker and a little easier than trying to build it while running a hospital at the same time.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Yes, I'm going to get a little bit more of your time. That's your priority. Is there an extra part for you, Jennifer? I was going to suggest that, actually. So if you didn't catch that, we're watching a slippery through chapter eight, which is economic development, building, planning, and heritage, if you're a fellow of councillor Jasmine. And 8.1 is a preservation in regards to the pedestrian bicycle ferry feasibility study. Councillor Jasmine, is there anything you would love to?
The subcommittee met along with the other members of the committee from across the pond, and I wanted to speak to it because this report is very, very thorough, and we have an expert in the room to go over it. But I just wanted to thank you for coming and presenting this to us, and it's a very, very exciting project, and I just have a whole lot of hope for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for welcoming me tonight. Just a quick overview of the project, overview of the study, main findings, and what are the next steps. So something very brief.
It doesn't say who you are or who you are.
Oh, sorry about that. I always assume everyone knows me, but this is a false assumption.
We know there's cameras as well, so.
Okay. So my name is Nick Pahle. I'm a consultant at a marine expert for CBCS, which is a transportation consulting firm based in Ottawa with offices in Toronto, Montreal, and all different places. And we do work in marine transportation projects. We do work for rail also, as well as private PPP projects, energy projects. We have a strong presence in Africa as well, as well as in Canada and the United States as well. So it's quite a work. Good. So the purpose of the city was to obtain an interest in this project. What would be the border requirements? What are the operational needs? And what are the costs? Finally, everything comes down to costs. So what we found is that, yes, there's a strong interest in the community. We consulted different tourist stakeholders in the region, in Prescott as well as in Augsburg, and in both, and on both shores, I say, yeah, we want this project, we think it's going to be a plus to enhance our touristic attraction, and so on and so forth. So on this side, very high interest. The biking community, not only the local one, but those organize biking trips in New York and stuff like that. And so, yes, they are eye-interested in this service because then it increases the number of different groups or paths or projects or things they can propose to their members. The marine community, they have low and eye-interest. Low interest is mainly explained because if they don't have an available vessel to do the work, then they're not really interested because they don't have a boat ready to go as we speak. But for those who have a vessel, available vessel, then they're very interested. And so, which is very, which was a very good finding to see the level of interest. They think it's feasible, they think it's possible, and so when private operators are so enthusiastic about a project, it's a good sign for a project. Border agencies, we have to cross borders still. And so first time we met them was kind of medium to low interest, but as the project went by and we discussed, talked to them, and people in the project, like in Prescott and Augsburg, talked to the border agencies as well, then their interest towards the project increased more and more, and they're getting more, they collaborate more and more towards this project. So which is kind of a good news. Everything goes into the right direction as we speak. Border requirements, quickly. Of course, they have books of rules and regulations that has to be followed, but still, the basic principle for them is the ferry service should cover their costs. That's the basic principle. Another basic principle, the ferry operator is responsible for packs being passengers with denied entry. So let's imagine a non-Canadian, non-US citizen taking the ferry. If pizza in Canada would be expired, so once he exits, Canada cannot get back in. Goes into the US, the border agent says, well, no, you don't get into the United States. So what do you do with this guy? He's kind of stuck on the ferry, can't go back and get into the United States. You just wait for an international flag vessel to go along and you just make them work. So those are all the different issues that for, in a custom agent perspective, they have to consider and figure out solutions because they know then they're going to be pointed out, oh, you should, they're going to have to deal with the pressure to accept this person. So just to let you know. Also, CBP, CBSA, they have requirements for buildings, and so those are federal requirements with very specific thing, and so which can be very expensive, very... But on the good side is that for them, a food ferry, food passenger, bicycles, it's considered as being a low-risk border crossing procedure. It's not like cars or other mode of transportation mode. So for them, it's a low-risk operation, so which is out of things. The operational needs, which is, if it's a Canadian flag vessel, then it has to comply to Transport Canada Regulations. If it's a US flag vessel doing the job, then it's US Coast Guard. But those are regular things that boat operator are used to do when they carry passengers. It's very easy. It's not a thing from your perspective. The need for docked space at Prescott and Augsburg, those are existing because of the size of the vessel. The municipal marinas will be able to welcome such vessels, so that's pretty straightforward. What we looked into the different scenarios was like using a small vessel, like 15-passenger more or less vessel, and up to a 50-passenger vessel more or less. Those are the two scenarios we use to calculate costs. So coming into cost, for 15 passengers, so yeah, because there are not a fixed cost for those small vessels, but there are also some variable costs as well. So we did different scenarios with a five-day operation per season, up to 23 days of operation. Then we split those costs amongst vessel operation, border cost, because they were, both agencies work on a cost recovery type of operation, service, and then administration cost for marketing and dealing with the RFP to get the boat operator and so on. And the ferry facility cost, we didn't get into that because border crossing facilities was kind of complicated for now. They didn't want to disclose any information until there's kind of a real project coming in, which is okay. So you see for a small passenger vessel will go from 45,000 up to $87,000 per year, per season, depending on if it's a five-day or 23-day operation. We did the same thing for a 50-passenger vessel, so then the cost goes from 46 to $130,000 a year, more or less. What about the income? So we did the type of net benefit, net income that could be expected for the two sides of the vessel, depending on the different fare, from $450 per crossing, per person, up to $850. So you see that with a smaller vessel, it's going to be very hard to cover the cost. And those net income are based on a 23-day operation. And so, but for the 50 passengers, it's going to be, it will be easier with a more reasonable per passenger, per crossing cost. But the thing is, the challenge with the 50 passengers is if you do a pilot project or you start with this project, well, you fill in the vessels so that you're going to generate enough income. This is the challenge with the vehicle. But with a smaller boat, the challenge is that even though the boat is small, you're going to reduce the amount of money you're going to have to spend to keep it running. So those are kind of the two things to consider, depending on what direction you would like to go. So those are a few numbers to help you make a decision there or see what would be your Economic impact. So we calculated the two different impacts, one from adding, one from the boat operation per se, because then people working on it, so on and so forth. You got to generate job, you got to spend fuel, spend a lot of fuel, and all those different type of things. The same for the extra tourist coming into Prescott. We did it, we did those calculations for Ontario only and for 23-day season. And so you see for different scenarios, and see with all those numbers, it more, it can be, it justifies the cost of the service. Of course, those, this money doesn't come directly into the pocket of those who will be solicited, who will have to pay or subsidize the service. So this is always a challenge with economic impact calculation somehow, as all it looks like, but then someone will have to pay the real... As always, it looks nice, but then someone will have to pay the real interest. But give you at least some ideas, some figures here. Next step, what should be done next? It's already December. So implementing a pilot project. The good thing is that with the town of Prescott discussions with CBSA, then CBSA agreed that for a pilot project over two weekends, they will do it for free with very little infrastructure. They will accept it. So which is kind of a good news. It reduces the risk to implement the pilot service and see if there are any customers, any real interest to take that further. And so, it reduces the cost for them. What are the risks? Border requirements. Of course, there are kind of canvas CBSA agreement, but it will have to be finalized and signed and so on and so forth. What will be the marine facility availability? What going to be the needs to implement that? Just to make sure we have the correct picture. From what we've seen, we think that it's going to be very easy, not very expensive. Another risk, to recover the cost through passenger fares. You see with that little vessel, can you imagine asking eight fifty per crossing, per person? That's very expensive. People might just turn around because they're going to find it too expensive. So this is one of the risks operating with a small vessel. But somehow, there are risks to be taken. It's up to you to decide which one. And social market demand. That won't be for the fifteen passenger. I don't think so. But for the fifty, maybe. That's going to be the risk for the fifty passenger. The availability of the vessel, it's also a risk. Because there are no vessel just standing by the dock just waiting for a call to be used. Most boat operators in the area, they have their fleet, they're operating it for years, and they know what to do on every single summer. And so, that's going to be, that's a risk and a challenge to find a boat that look good because there's a marketing side of it, but that is available and cost-effective. If you find a vessel, I'd say, I don't know, in Nova Scotia, for example, or Newfoundland, how much is it going to cost to bring it here for two weekends? It can be very expensive. And the boat operator, they are already planning their next summer season. So if on those two weekends, they plan to offer a different touristic tour and stuff like that, then you come up later and say, well, we're going to do, I would like to hire your boat charter it. And it's going to say, well, I'm already selling those weekends through my marketing network. So that's going to be a challenge. But we consult boat operators in Canada as well as in the United States. And we found two boat operators with a kind of an available boat that will be suitable for this project. So, which was kind of good because with preliminary discussion with them, we were able to get kind of a more market, real cost in our analysis rather than what I call consulting cost, which might be sometimes more theoretical than practical depending on a specific thing from an area. So I accept final agreement, of course, combined with border agencies because this is the showstopper and those risks are those that you have less control over. And then formalize the goal, RFP, expression of interest, depending on what will be your strategy to be able to get the proper vessel creator for your service. And all the marketing and coordination of the project. Marketing should not be underestimated because it's kind of new. There's always people, oh, I didn't know if I knew. But you know, you want to minimize the amount of people you're going to cross on the streets, telling you that. So marketing, work it properly with stakeholders, try to integrate their service, this new service with their programming for next summer, their activities, so that it gets integrated. So those are the kind of strategies you can implement to make sure that people are on the dock, willing to jump into the service. Questions? Comments?
Would the three of us who are paying attention to this presentation rather than signing Christmas cards have any questions that they'd like to ask the gentleman? Counselor Janssen?
Thank you for your presentation. This report, as you can see, is a hundred pages and you highlighted very well what the report is. But I do encourage you to read the report if you haven't already just because there is a lot of good regional stats in here, daytime. And I'm glad that you really highlighted that priority, the next steps, all of them. But that marketing will be a key. And in this report too, it outlines well what our partners could be and what our partner should be in this pilot project. And not to put Dana on the spot, but Dana was our staff lead on this. So if you want to add anything to highlight along with the presenter's comments, I would love that too.
Thank you for your issue. The rest of counsel. This was a very thorough study that was completed. As Teresa's indicated, it was, you know, there's no way in ten or fifteen minutes and it must have begun to capture the full breadth of information that's in there. But I think looking through that and reviewing that in detail will really give you the sense of the opportunity that is there. From our perspective, I think, you know, we would really like to move forward with next steps as soon as possible, kind of seeing what's out there for the market of potential operators and vessels. Because as Nicholas stated, you know, they've got their plans in place pretty much already. So I think that is really critical next steps. But from a broader perspective, and I do encourage you to look at the impact as well, you know, I think we all recognize this is more about generating economic growth for the community and our businesses and tourism attraction assets. And although there would be, I believe, an initial cost to the municipality, I think based on what we're seeing, if we are very strategic in getting the right type of vessel, I do believe that this could be a potential break-even project that could generate huge economic impact for the broader community, not just Prescott and Augustsburg, but the surrounding regions as well. So I think it definitely warrants further assessment, and I think the pilot study would really be merited. To not move forward at this point, I think would do the study itself injustice. And it's very critical to move forward and get that pilot study implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janssen.
Sorry, did you have a question?
Just, if you're planning to run it for twenty-three day period, do we have, you're just going to do weekends? You're not going to do during the week? So the eight summer weekends would make up the bulk of the twenty-three days?
Yeah, for the pilot, we were looking at like two or three critical weekends in the summer, whereas the twenty-three days was highlighting more operating over a number of weekends over the summer. But the weekends would definitely be the focus, long weekends as well. Trying to align it around, you know, the civic weekend moving forward.
So you picked the Augsburg.
Festival, Samhain.
The festival, yeah.
Yeah, Shakespeare.
The Shakespeare.
And really reaching out to other organizations too, such as Fort Wellington and other groups to try and get more things activated and happening to support the ferry that's coming here and vice versa.
And the two boats that you've identified, or the two operators that you've identified, are they nearby?
Yeah. I think I'll get that first and then I wouldn't mind having a comment.
Well, I don't think you have that because I heard you.
Oh, I know you were there.
So we did want to bring this back next week for further discussion at council and perhaps you were saying, looking at possible operators as well as kind of solidifying some dates. In fact, we would not commit the town to undertaking the project, but it certainly would put the plan in place to undertake it in twenty-two. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that for Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I apologize. I was signing those cards, but as you know, we've been going over this great study for many, many months now. And you know, those of us with the working group were very, very familiar with the intricacies of it. I did know the one concern we had, and it has been fixed on, is a very basic one, on household income. I see that's been changed there in the opening as well. So a couple of little things were. But excellent, excellent report overall. I agree at wholeheartedly with everything Dana's mentioned going forward. We did look at, this is the numbers here with the twenty-three and so forth days. That's more steady state if and when we get past the pilot project. We did look at three weekends, and just to Counselor Young's point, we talked about two weekends where big events were happening and one just average weekend in the summertime, just so we could see what the demand would be on just an average Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We hadn't even talked about it would be all three days of the weekend. It would just be Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday. And we talked about, we did decide on hours about, we talked about ten to ten or something like that we discussed because that was one of the requests coming back from the border security agencies. And as was noted, we did reason sadly we couldn't do the pilot this past summer was because we had that little hiccup with US border security. But that's been resolved now thanks to some great work on both sides of the border to get that pushed through. So cost implications right now are fairly minimal. So it does seem to be the kind of thing we can really, really hopefully get behind and really endorse because I think the numbers and the very extensive study here has shown there's a significant potential, a really, really, really a good demand in the region for it. But as Dana mentioned, we're still trying to reach out and get a little more things, some more solidified with cycling event or something that we could use to kind of close the loops as we're looking at everything. The only thing I will note that we were planning on going to Augsburg, everyone did get that notice earlier tonight, there are numbers who are heading over to Augsburg this evening, their selfless wall force, to present that to their city council. They've had a couple of issues there. They're getting quarrel probably with their council tonight. So unfortunately, that's not going to happen this evening, so that will happen in January. The one thing I would leave it with everyone tonight when we do schedule that for January, that we set it up for a night where we can have a delegation from Prescott, we don't have a conflict. Because I think it's going to be very important to have this much representation here in, from here to Augsburg. They are moving into a new term of majority of council with their election. New mayor, three new councillors, I believe, so four new total on the group. And I think we need to kind of reestablish that, the ties that we've set with the current council and city manager and do our best to make sure that that continues into the new year because this obviously is going to need to be a project for the new council. So we just need staff with that when we do coordinate that, that we make sure that's still a priority. Thanks again for coming tonight. It's been an exciting process. The last year and a half or so we've been working on this. And one more plug for Senator Bob Runz, former Senator Bob Runz. Bob's the one that brought this to me in the first place, way back when, when it didn't quite fit with Rockwell's objectives at the time. And without Bob's role here, this wouldn't be happening. So I just want to thank him publicly again on that because he's given us, I think, a tremendous opportunity. We can do bolster our tourism and do something really nice and innovative for the region. So I'll shut up now and very much appreciate it.
Corey, do you have something?
I just do have a question if you're online. When your executive summary, the fifteen-passenger vessel, the operating cost for the five-day compared to the twenty-three-day is only two thousand dollars difference.
For this service, we can't target a particular operator who had such a vessel this size available. And in this case, there was a lot of fixed costs to be considered for the first year. And so, there was not so many variable costs to break a few more days or a few less days. So this is why the difference is not so big, which is kind of weird because when I did the presentation, I didn't look at the calculation for a couple of months and then I looked at it. So I must have got a mistake somewhere. I went through the numbers again. And now, that's basically because of this particular case, there's a lot of fixed costs. That's why.
Because when I look at the fifty-passenger vessel.
It's expensive for five days.
Yeah, well, five days is cheaper than the fifteen-day, but the twenty-three-day is fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, thirty thousand is more than the possibility, but the other one's only two thousand dollars.
Yeah, for the larger vessel, there were much less fixed costs, much more on the variable cost. So that explains it, which kind of looks weird. And with normal cost of a normal vessel, that we could see bigger difference for the small vessel from less day to more days. But considering that a vessel sometimes you can operate it over a hundred or a hundred and fifty days per season, five and twenty-three, it's very small numbers compared to what the potential vessel over summer.
Thank you. Counselor Shankar, I took a couple of hours this morning and read through this. It's very lengthy, very detailed, as you would expect because costs is a fair chunk of change to get done. To me, when I read through the whole thing, it came down to a conclusion, which is pretty much the same conclusion that you have here, and I'm just going to read it. A foot-passenger bicycle ferry service between Prescott, Ontario, and Augsburg, New York is technically feasible and would provide a much-needed border process for cyclists in this region. However, border service and facility costs currently make this operation cost prohibitive. Should the town of Prescott and the city of Augsburg wish to pursue the ferry pilot project with a lower-risk option, test the service and obtain more information about key users, market size, and travel behavior. And as you pointed out earlier in this, there isn't one currently operating, so you don't have the information directly that you can look at. So it's all taken third-hand from other places. I think it's key that it says the town of Prescott and the city of Augsburg wish to pursue the ferry. I think we all realized when we started down this road that we probably would wind up spending some money the first year and if this is what the pilot project is, should we decide to do it this summer. But I also think it's imperative that we get the city of Augsburg on board because I don't think the taxpayers of Prescott should pay the whole brunt of the cost of this going forward. So Mayor Todd's comments about getting the new Augsburg council on board, I think are very valid. And I think that we should pursue that in January. And if we could arrange some kind of a mutual cost sharing with them for a service this summer, obviously, the fee is to use the boat or to cover some of the costs. But we have to have some kind of a maximum, I think, and I think that they would want the same thing, that we would be prepared to foot. So with that, unless somebody else has something to say, I think we'll leave it. So thank you very much for coming. Your presentation, excellent report. Obviously, you spent a lot of time in it, and we will definitely be taking a look at it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good seeing you.
Okay, we're going to flip back in time here to go to speed to number six. Finance and Corporate Services, Court Royal Chair, Counselor Young. There's nothing tonight. I think in particular you wanted to bring up all the items. Operations, I don't know, Counselor. Charlie. I do really know my brother's attitude. I apologize. I apologize, Mr. Armstrong. I just figured it passed that. I guess, Counselor Young, maybe there is something you want to address today. Yes, sir?
No, I think the man who's prepared to lead us through the calculation of the results of our submissions. I do notice that five of us submitted something, opposed to seven possibilities.
So through, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to walk through the presentation. And please stop me as we go through and address questions and issues. So in terms of health and safety-type projects, so these sort of two projects would be. So in terms of health and safety type projects, so these sort of two projects we've kind of discussed for a while. One is to repair and upgrade to the break wall at the water treatment plant. And certainly, you know, there's a number of individuals on council as well as staff that feel that that is a high priority for, I don't know if this is here, or for twenty-one. Reconstruction of East Street, King's and Dibble. Again, staff feel that that's a high priority as well. We are working on it for years to confirm exactly camera of the East Street sewer as well as Dibble Street sewer, just to determine both of those will all be a project priority in the next three years. And after our work on Henry Street, we see that perhaps East Street needs a little bit more addressing from a modeling perspective than we were expecting.
I was going to wait till the end of this comment, but I'm sure it's going through all our heads that it was difficult to rank a million and a half job on East Street with a five hundred dollar purchase of the screen.
Absolutely.
And if we're talking about reconstruction of East Street as opposed to planned reconstruction of Dibble Street, that's an easier decision that can be made by viewing the tapes of the camera. But which might explain why only two of five put that number in there.
Absolutely. So what we're trying to do is whittle down the overall list into a number that we could tackle to get better numbers off. So the overall list was sixty or seventy items.
Right.
And certainly, it's a lot of time to generate even a guess limit on some of those items. So we're trying to whittle that down, come down to a grouping that, you know, we can all agree that we were like the city of twenty-twenty and then the other ones would be held in advance for twenty-twenty-one. And so that's kind of what we were trying to issue about. So I completely agree, but we've kind of gone through a couple of iterations of how we identify priorities and take a look at these types of things. But certainly, I think if we get to the next step and then you'll have the numbers and be able to say, you know, okay, so we'll do this one thing on the project by wanting to, these three things are less than five thousand dollars around the operations budget, don't really need to have other, further discussion on those.
And it applies to the next item as well, the fire department, which they have an ongoing program to replace their, so many pieces of their gear each year. And that's built into the budget and, you know, very unlikely we would ever consider taking it out of the budget. This is too.
Absolutely. The one thing that I want to put in front of council and also for the public is to have these things known that we still are going to spend thirty thousand dollars a year on fire, but we're still going to, you know, operate sort of over a million dollars on reconstruction and the break wall, you know, is going to run into hundreds of thousands. So we want to make that point that even though there's a whole bunch of nice paths on the list, there's three easier units in particular are more hack to house because now you're working against health and safety type things. So I also want to, and I have just questions through you to, just on the break wall water treatment plant, we're talking about the entire dock and everything there, that's. So we would see that as being to the west side of the water treatment plant and then the south side of the water treatment plant up to the boat. And so we see that as being the one of the most, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, at risk items. And then you'll see later on the list that there's talk about the rest of the water. So we take a look at it from a perspective and I really want to split those two because for the water treatment plant in particular, we could use part of all these herbs for the water treatment plant to support the break wall upgrades and rehab, whereas the rest of the couldn't be put against the water reserve.
So just as a follow, that's quite a thought, that's a fairly expensive fix, but we can get around the other side because quite frankly, it's been kind of falling in the river for a couple of decades now. But is that, that's also a spot, can we not, if we go down that road, and I mentioned it briefly, I wasn't coming back formally yet, but looking at that potential funding from subnation? Because this would tie in as well to maybe making some changes along that area because that's the most important spot of flooding that can actually be infiltration of the water treatment center. So is that possible, that this, that whole project actually could take advantage of that funding? Because that's a big part of what's happening.
This is a superiority issue to our drinking water.
Absolutely. Yeah, so if you flood the water treatment plant, that would have a much bigger impact on health and safety than flooding some type of.
So I guess my, like, could just the final point through you, Mr. Chair, just that's probably something we really should look for external dollars if we can, because that's going to be probably, I don't know, there's a lot of work to be done down there. I guess I can't even, even estimate a number, but it's six figures anyway.
Absolutely.
So that's a good possibility for some funding there. And depending on what the province could even come forward with their recommendations last week, I don't know where they're going with that, but maybe there's some more dollars available. So just, just a note that perhaps we won't have to dig into our own pockets on that one. Thank you.
What you've got there is a cement dock that we used to jump off and swim off when I was a kid, which has been added to, which is deteriorating, the added to portion of it. And then, of course, to the east of that, we have there to the boat ramp, which is various sizes of rock. And that whole area was flooded and high tide with heavy winds and boats coming through at one point in time. And then, of course, the west side of that, that faces directly west into the bay, there's really nothing except a sidewalk and some rock along there. So we are, as you mentioned, potentially talking some fairly hefty dollars. And since it is a protection for our water treatment plant, which is right along the river, I would think that the province, perhaps we could obtain that because of the fair generous flows last few years as far as projects of the water treatment plant go, we've had two very large projects down there.
It'd be interesting to see if there are any recommendations for funding a couple of that report last week. Nothing so far, but they're going to get pressure from all municipalities on that because they've identified some serious issues. Hey, what do you have, Matthew?
So moving on to development type projects, repurposing the renovated, or renovate the old water treatment plant building. That's the white building in front of the brick waste, or water treatment plant. And so certainly, the public rated that as number one and we had one member of council identify it. In terms of, for me, it's a development, so if a development came along and then we found a new sport or we found a developer that wanted to redevelop it, then absolutely consider it. At this point in terms of priorities, it would be at the top of my list, but absolutely open to any, even all possibilities of redeveloping it. Seeking provincial site certification, the town owned industrial lands, absolutely a priority. The public identified that three members of council as well as staff. Exploring purchase of waterfront lands, that was by two members of council. Certainly, we know what the issues are with the part that we do own and our understanding is that it will be increasingly contaminated for further East U build. But it's certainly something that we can explore. Preservation of historical records, obviously, that's an important one for us. We have worked through that internally, staff see it as a not high dollar value project, but certainly something that we need to start to work towards and focus on over the next few years. Bicycle ferry study, pilot project, so there again, something that is kind of a continuation of the information that you heard this evening and explore regional transportation system. Certainly, that is on the radar, but I'm working forward. So when we get to recreational tourism, there are three pages of this. And so starting with training downtown revitalization fund, it was high on the public's radar as well as two councillors and staff install solar lighting on along Heritage Trail. That was three members of council, high in the public. And certainly, from a staff perspective, we don't see it as being one of our top priorities, but certainly, just because we've identified a big priority doesn't necessarily mean it's not something that we wouldn't undertake or to establish in the ballpark. But if you talk about that for a number of years now, four out of five councillors, number three from the public perspective and certainly something that staff sees as something that we'd like to get done over the next few years. Our rejuvenation of Prescott of ball fields, that didn't make the list, however, that being said, if we're successful in our recreation complex proposal, then certainly that would be addressed in the course of that. So that's something I think we need to perhaps tackle in twenty-twenty. My special beach, just from council, wasn't something that was highlighted. Replacement and upgrades of the play structures on yearly basis. We see this as being just due diligence, health and safety type of issue as issues arise with our playing equipment that actually addresses, has standards change, being able to address and update the play structures for those standards and we continue to move those in the right direction. Establishing a formal pathway between Mackenzie and Fischel and grocery store in McIntyre. That was on the list of four or five councillors. It's something that staff intends to take additional look at because they don't believe there's currently a right of way running between Fischel and Mackenzie and the grocery store. And so there's a number of things we have to do from a land permission and approval standpoint in order to be able to establish that, certainly something we're happy to undertake. But just we want to note that, that as, at this moment, I don't believe there is an easy way or a right of way to do that.
It was pointed out that it was last term, I can't remember who brought the subject up. The names are well come from the public, do you have?
Egress, you're talking?
Yeah.
My, my.
If there's an accident at that corner with Edward, I understand that's our most frequent accident corner in town. If there was a bad enough one that restricted access in and out of that area in an emergency, there's no way to get through, there's no way to get out, there's no way to get a fire truck in and out. So we had talked about some kind of a derivable pathway with perhaps a gate across that the fire truck or ambulance or somebody would have a key to or a touchpad type of thing, walkway access would still be available. So when you see a formal pathway, I think you really need to devote more attention to roadway rather than a pathway going forward there.
Absolutely. So we were, so from a, just a geological perspective and topography, there's fairly significant height difference between Fischel and how it drops down into Prescott Center Drive. So we see the possibility of pathway definitely being there and being able to expand it, make sure it's wide enough so they could in emergency situation be able to support a fire truck and emergency services. So that would be a building to that. But again, we would need to establish a solid way and the influence in order to be able to do that. And that is crossing at least two or three properties that we need to take a look at.
The other thing that occurs to me when they're building houses on Fischel and finishing houses up in the north end, we had complaints from the people down in Mackenzie and down the other street, I can't remember the name of, of the traffic and the dirt and stuff. And so I think most of that traffic started to come through that area, did it not? To the McIntyre parking lot, access that way rather than actually coming up to Mackenzie, which means that they weren't actually driving up and through there. So it is possible.
Yeah, it's definitely possible. It's from an engineering standpoint, if you're doing it on gravel or not even on gravel, but on dirt and taking that risk versus having an actual formal roadway, you know, to things that we have to consider.
Just a quick, it's just a livability thing for that neighborhood too. I mean, it is, it's something that should have been part of the original plan on subdivision. Obviously, it wasn't done at the time, but yeah, I'm glad it's, you know, going to survive as an exploratory option. The same with the beach and the rejuvenation of the ball fields, there's some, and the Centennial Park gazebo thing too. I mean, a lot of that's just part of the master plan, some of that, I mean, how we move forward. But I'm glad it's, we're going to continue to explore it numbers wise. But it's just the one comment, like, I'll be honest, I didn't, I didn't fill this out. Part of it was I got really busy the other last week. Part of it, and it was the same last year, I find it so difficult to actually categorize this that I started and I can't, I can't finish. Because it's, so I just, and I know staff, it's always a work in progress, but for next year, if there's, I don't know if there's a way to do this, there's no perfect way, but just even the scale of the projects and the way we can look at a certain number of large scale and move some of the others. But anyways, I just, that's my little comment, everything here is, I agree with you basically.
I think, I think the purpose of this night is to hit your twenty or twenty-five or whatever and put a cost next to them and that will make it a lot easier. Where you decide, you move forward with these five because they only totaled five thousand dollars, whereas the other ones are hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And some are unknowns too, like, and I'll go to the beach one again. We really don't know because the excavation, we did talk briefly at Miller. I mean, I'm not saying we're just absolutely tied to the hit to them. But, I mean, it could be a very low cost option if they come in, scoop it all out of the winter and then we put it in. Or it could be crazy expensive too because the feds want fifteen nature studies and everything else. So we just, you know, there's some things that are just unknown, so it's kind of tough, right?
And I'm certain if we owned the Christopher Wall fields, it would have had a higher priority on the list of council, council members.
And if we knew about the arena funding, because it's all, I can't hurt the same thing.
It's funded with Jews and with Vineyard, it was all funded on one member of council and same with the added new shelter, these people, the janitor park. So continuing on, paving a heritage trail, wasn't picked up by a member of council as a priority. Renovation of the life house on one member, rejuvenation of, improvement of Prince Street.
Sorry, actually, Matthew, if I could just show something in there, I think it kind of, and I thought last season, like, to paving a heritage trail, I walk that on a regular basis. And it doesn't need to be paved, there is any section which is very bad and it's a section that's north of the three hundred feet of break wall, steel break wall down there. It's been filled in by rock and it was paved over and they should have moved that trail probably about ten, fifteen feet to the north and it wouldn't be so bad. But there's probably, I would say, about three hundred feet of that that either needs to be relocated or rebuilt, repaid, not the whole thing, there's nothing wrong with most of it. So perhaps we could just kind of have a look at that and see what's possible there. Even if we filled it in, we repaired it a couple of times, even if we look at a better repair of it, because I think there's probably a liability issue I could see right now with it. I don't have a big problem negotiating it, but some people would. Right, did you have something on that?
I think that exact comment, yeah, there's just the one, there's a couple problematic sections. If there's just a way we can maybe look at it for maintenance and include it on a budget somewhere. Because there's a, there's a couple of rough sections down there as a challenge.
So additional boat rest facility, there's only one, that's by Craig Carroll of the history of Rose Garden. That's totally a low cost item and highlighted by staff as a well remembered member. Rejuvenation of the every purpose of the courts of high school, two individuals highlighted that. Operating the waterfront trail from St. Lawrence to water treatment plant, venture lock on one member. Establish a bike rental program, again, low cost item, one member involved staff.
Actually, I'm going to throw something else in here, and this is an observation, Matthew. Renovation of the life house, we do things to it on a regular basis. I mean, we've replaced the siding on the outside of it. I noticed a week or so ago when I walked by and it was drawn to my attention by somebody else the next day when I walked by. And we've recently added what looks like a. And we've recently added what looks like an air conditioner to the outside of the building. A lighthouse is something that looks kind of like that. It doesn't have an air conditioner hanging on the outside of it. It's an eyesore. I don't know why it was done that way. There is an adequate amount of space underneath the walkway on the cement base of that where that air conditioner could have been mounted and preserved the actual, um, lighthouse look of the whole thing. As councilors, we're not supposed to be involved in the day-to-day running of things. But when I see stuff like that, which to me detracts from the appearance of, of, of what is supposed to be, it kind of makes me wonder, well, at what point do we get involved?
Okay, I think you're on your way. Okay, so then, um, I think the floating seat dug dock, um, was only highlighted by one member. That might have the business case attached to it, so it would be a repay. Uh, upgrading the waterfront trail, uh, park to George Street, uh, was highlighted as a priority. Establishing a formal pathway, now the L, um, I think was in a combination with establishing dog park, depending on where the dog park went. And establishing a double parking lot for a bit in relationship to dog park as well, and again, is dependent on where it goes. From there, uh, going through the infrastructure, building equipment, accessible sidewalks, I think everyone agreed, case of priority. Cleaning the transition L D lighting is priority. Upgrading and reinforcement of the break wall on the waterfront, um, certainly highlighted on higher level areas. Uh, specific accessory curbs at every bend at waterways. Moving to be adding the asphalt hot box, uh, certainly we're, uh, looking at that as an option. We know that the counties have one, so we're looking to see if that's a possibility of borrowing as well as partnering with our neighboring municipalities to be able to buy one and share it among men. Moving from there, replacement of the sidewalk plow, uh, was a priority. Adding a backpack standing unit, uh, was a priority for two. I would, uh, I would provide as well as a highlight for staff. Pair of museum wall was identified. Repairing, uh, parking lot and street behind waterhouse side of the museum, sorry.
Sorry, just, just on the plow, so it's a, it's a site point, I don't know, and obviously it's not gonna survive any issue, but Rockwell bought that machine and I think they're just testing it issue that one that chops up the ice and uh, are we looking at that still or are we at least looking to get a report from, 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 or the city council on that? Because it could be ice addition here or you're gonna rental from them.
Yeah, so absolutely, we would like to see how it functions first. I don't think they'll be able to take full use of it in, in, uh, twenty nineteen. But we'd like to see how it functions in twenty twenty and then be able to make that. Um, but yeah, we, we've looked at that as a possible option. We'd just like to see how it works and, and look at that firsthand.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that because we did talk about very briefly the last year with the city order, but that was a bit too.
So with the, the parking lots behind waterhouse side, I think, I went down and I took another look at it. It's really the street that needs to be repaved, not necessarily the parking lots. So given that the, the street needs that work, I think, uh, that would qualify for open funding. And looking at that in comparison to one or other units and certainly see how that fits into our twenty twenty plan. Replacement of the sidewalks, mower unit, uh, priority. Replacement of twenty-year-old front end mower, we replaced one. Leave us in twenty eighteen and uh, looking to see if we replace another one, uh, in twenty twenty. Uh, replacement of additional barricades, street traffic safety, all sorts of things. That being said, they're not really expensive items, they're probably a little thirty-five hundred dollars in total. So it might be something that we can go to a discarded operation type object.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, um.
Well, I was actually on that one, I just wanted to ask if that, the additional barricades would also be used for EDR and assistance there with the OPP to block off other, whatever areas we can help with that in a strict traffic form, actual traffic.
So we can go right through, uh, regular replacement process and uh, this would be the next phase of it. But actually, I think, uh, the ones that we have are, don't meet the standards and uh, too easily can be stolen or, or fall apart. So uh, just that's something that we have to take a look at. We had docks, we did have an evaluation done on that, which I'll bring forward to council. The infrastructure below water is a concern and so something certainly we need to address over the next several years. The docks are now, uh, well thirty years old and so need to, to have some, uh, regeneration to, uh, mostly the interim systems as well as the pontoons that they sit on, uh, need to be addressed. And uh, but we can do that over a number of years in a logical way, uh, without having to replace them all at the same time.
We have one that's below water level right now. Uh, is there anything that we can do? The dock itself is in reasonable condition, but obviously whatever keeps it afloat is not is, uh, the fact that it is being dragged down, but probably the weight of water and the steel tubes underneath is dragging the one opposed to it in the end of the main dock down. Is there something we can do with that, Matthew, or at least looking to maybe tighten it loose or separating it to for winter to let the other, uh, tops run?
Sort of, uh, to, to look at that. It, uh, we've had to address kind of more emergency type, uh, things on four different docks this year. And so that's certainly needing to, why we need to take a better look at that, but absolutely, I'll have, uh, some able things to do from that perspective. Would you, sorry, adding the genie left to avoid rental equipment. So this is another one where we reach out to our neighboring municipalities. I've already had a couple of conversations with a few of them. All of them see it as a possibility or something that they'd like to participate in and uh, certainly something we'll bring back to council after the conversation on.
Does, does Rockwell?
Uh, don't move, you said.
Because I think they had contractor who overworked out down the last week, just why I mentioned it, that's an opportunity, it's ownership there.
Absolutely. We, we see everyone from Gavin Oakway to, to Carbondale and uh, I don't know, we see our northern neighbors as being kind of a partner in this and uh, whether kind of blowing it up a couple of thousand dollars to begin with is our ownership or we would take it on as the municipality and then come today. And then those are two obviously, uh, different things that we can explore. My wanting is to bring back to you various options and, and what it looked like in terms of cost and then you can make a, a better informed decision. Uh, repairs and rejuvenation to the front end motor and so, uh, this one obviously is a priority. Uh, we had to make a fix to the transmission casing, uh, within the last couple of months. Uh, we noticed that that didn't necessarily solve the problem that, that we have, so going back and taking another look at, uh, what needs to be, to be on with that. Unfortunately, it's just the casing, but the, the casing is an integral part of the, the overall unit and how it fits in on the unit. So that was a little bit of an unexpected and, um, disappointing, uh, result with that, so we, we'll be back with, for, for further information on that. Lift gate for the quarter, three-quarter ton truck, um, obviously the status of it is effective, wasn't high on the, uh, list of, uh, the public order by the council, but, but certainly something that we want to keep on our horizon. And rejuvenation of the older portion of the town operations building, this time we see it as a pressing matter, but certainly something to do with the pressure moving forward. Finally, we have the, uh, slide three, three for infrastructure building equipment. So replacement of sidewalks on Southside King Street, um, holding, received one, uh, highlighted from, from council. Placement of windows at town hall, uh, we receive that as a, um, I don't think we need to replace every single window in this building. I think there are windows that are four feet wide that need to be replaced. Uh, many of the other ones are three feet and under and, uh, which seem to, to work just fine, so, um, we do see there being an alternative of, of having to not spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, um, certainly we're exploring that and we'll continue to do so. Um, just order. Yes, that's on order. I just wanted to update the council, the one that's in front here has been ordered. We're just waiting for the, for it to come in and then it will be installed. So part of that, um, you'll have to, to see, will it look slightly different from how it is today just because of the measurements and whatnot. And that we shouldn't have four or five windows, um, that's in this size of building, it's just not what is recommended or is the standard for today's work.
What, what we may be looking at too, and I, I was just looking around behind us here, we have four large windows and it looks, I mean, they're all open. Do we really need all of our big windows opening? I mean, it would be less expensive and you could probably get a better structural window, more solid if, if it didn't open. And, um, I would think that two opening windows here or one would be satisfactory, actually none would be satisfactory if we could ever get the heating inclusive in this building to operate properly, which apparently can never happen. I mean, council, the council meeting about, what, a month ago because it was fifty-nine degrees in here. And the next week they had all these windows open and it had been overheating. It seems kind of silly to be talking about replacing windows when the heating system is, is, is much the blame as, as anything, but personally, just looking at all the windows in this town hall, I don't foresee any reason why all of the large windows need to open and that may solve some of the problem.
Adding back the forks, that's probably a hundred thousand dollar item, so that certainly can be covered on the operations side. Placement of one way of dock, that's to get it on the list. We know it needs to be replaced in the next couple of years. If we have to make a choice between one-time truck and the sidewalk plow, it's going to be the sidewalk plow. Uh, continued along key replacement at the town facilities, we've been doing that over the last three years. And I'd like to come back with a report to council and say what we accomplished and what we still have to go. So that way there's a clear understanding where, where we're at. Insulin barrier system and the operations yard, uh, there throughout the summer, they have topsoil, sand, uh, stone, uh, crush gravel, things like that. And so just being able to kind of meeting it up and make sure that there's not crossing any issue between, uh, the, the various advocates. And finally, uh, replacement of the current pack unit, again, probably a thousand or fifteen hundred dollar item and, and something to be covered in the operations side. So going from there, so I took all the information I received back from the public, uh, staff as well as, uh, members of council and then created a couple of lists. So couple of projects promoted to twenty twenty investigation stage, and this is slide one and three. So apparently, uh, break wall of water treatment plants, uh, East Street can be a double fire, uh, department gear. Uh, exploring the purchase of waterfront lands, uh, you know, again, exploring the, that, to, to other thing, not necessarily committing us to it. Uh, establishing dog park replacement and upgrades of the park, uh, play structures on a yearly basis. Establishing pathway from McKenzie Official, rejuvenation of the reperjust of the court of high school. Again, that form exploratory, uh, I had a couple of conversations with the school board, but certainly, um, something to look into. General cops will come back and then council can make a more informed decision on that. And then accessible sidewalks and crosswalks. Going from there, accessible hole, I found them there twice, I guess I did one on there. Uh, complete the transition to L D, uh, street magnets operating reinforcement of the break wall, uh, make the sidewalks and curves at least the water, or even waterhouse accessible. Uh, adding the, an asphalt hot box earlier, again, on providing some options, whether we partner with others or, or are able to obtain it in a different manner. Adding the, or replacement of the sidewalk plow, uh, backpack unit, repairing the parking lot or street behind waterhairs. Replacement of the sidewalk snow, snowball unit, uh, looking at replacing the front mower. Looking at a plan through, uh, for the, uh, infrastructure on the docks. Adding genie lift and repairs and rejuvenation to the front end motor. So basically, anything that had, um, between, uh, members of council and staff, if there was two that highlighted that that was a, uh, a priority, then I added it to the list. And then this is the capital list, then there's the operations list. So we see these as being items that either aren't changeable, uh, whereas if you're buying a piece of equipment or some of that, or they cost us in ten thousand dollars each. So seeking provincial site certification, uh, that is mostly down to studies and, uh, reports. And then particularly that, it will cost in excess of ten thousand, uh, but certainly we wanted to highlight that. Preservation of assortments, very small project, running a bicycle passenger ferry, um, you know, the development of that and looking at it. Exploring a regional transportation system, uh, again, exploratory, creating a downtown revitalization fund. That, again, not necessarily buying and applying a single piece of, uh, equipment and so that's why it becomes more operational. Installing solar lighting along Heritage Trail, creating a mural, um, kind of poster, you know, the coast garden. Adding the back row forks and, uh, continuing the lock, uh, key replacement. So, uh, there's also the new barrier system in the yard, so.
Just one quick comment on mural, uh, everybody probably knows that, but that's just basically to clean up that, that area where the fencing is. So it's an insulation mural all the way along that Christine Sloan is going to be working on. She was, this would have been done last year, but she was injured and I had to take some time off work. I was talking to her about this a couple of weeks ago, she's really excited about it and the kids are really excited about it as well. So this could actually be a nice little refreshing element to, uh, out on the beach this, uh, this coming summer. Kind of clear up an area of what's kind of industrial there, when it comes straight as well on, uh, junk, actually is probably the best one for me.
So then all the other projects, um, capital and operational, um, would be held until twenty twenty-one. And so that's kind of how we can all place is that if there was two members of council or staff that highlighted it as a, a project that needs a further investigation, if there wasn't, she would have highlighted it and it's on the list for twenty twenty-one.
Just to follow the conversation that, that the chair and I mentioned before, we're paving the Heritage Trail. So that, if everyone's in agreement on, on changing, now it's not the entire Heritage Trail. Can we move that to twenty twenty? Because as, as, as the chair did mention, and I, I fully back that, there are some areas that I think are deserving of some maintenance attention this year. Maybe a little bit of resurfacing in some places. So are you okay with that, obviously?
Yeah, because there are people that access that with, um, walking difficulties and, um, the, um, electric scooter type things. And it's a nice walk for them to be able to get that far down home water. And really, it's just that one section of that, you get the on-the-spot here and there, but if that one section was to be pressed. It's not, you're not gonna get a permanent fix there simply because of where it is and the fact that it keeps sinking. Like the front of a raw park used to keep sinking, uh, because it wasn't properly, uh, looked after, but, uh, at, at least it would be fixed up for the time being.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's basically, just wanted to go through where we are at this point, sort of, uh, the prioritization list. Make sure that council is in agreement that that's the one move forward, additional investigation and, and come from there.
There's, uh, one thing I wanted to ask you about, Matthew, is the provincial site certification for town home industrial lands. Are we talking to the same type of deal that Edwardsburg Arnold has, the East of Town?
Yes, so we would be, um, the exact same, uh, process. It would be for the lands that are south of the four oh one because part of the program is that you have to have infrastructure basically to be, um, available to it. And so the lands from four oh one not qualified, but certainly the ones set for the four oh one qualify. Once you go through the process and everything is passed, then it becomes part of the provincial database.
Okay, I, I, I wonder about that, whether we're going to be looking at north of the four oh one. The other thing I was wondering about, explore the regional transportation system and I know we had a certain percentage of the people from outside of town, um, answer this questionnaire as well. I presume that they were counted in and why shouldn't they be? Uh, I was curious if we could find out, uh, I believe there was six people, um, marked that from the public. Are they in town, out of town? I wondered, can we get that specific?
Certainly we, we can. Um, it wasn't just six people, it was number six on that list of priorities. So, um, it's always the lowest rank of, of the list that you see here, but certainly, uh, what happened kind of whole perhaps and be able to say they're in town, out of town.
Mike, just, I was gonna comment on this under new business and was working for a place. Uh, transit, uh, has been something that, uh, Mr. Armstrong's been dealing with this with. a place, transit, it has been something that Mr. Armstrong's been dealing with this with Jen at Lawbee's, the city manager of the city of Rockville for some time now has, it's we're not, it's not really at the point where we can bring it to council for a full discussion yet because there are a few things that have to be finalized there and it is dependent on some things happening in the city of Rockville. We did have a meeting today as well in Kellyville with Mayor Nancy Beckford and Deputy Mayor Jim McMannan, Matthew and I went up at Nancy's request because this came up at Kelly's, at Joint Services a little while ago. So there is the possibility right now, there seems to be some political overreach and there seems to be the possibility of potentially utilizing a little bit of service from Rockville to establish a rundown here so we're just kind of working with the city now and working with some of the other mayors in the area to see just what that could possibly look like. We are trying to get the mayors together with the CAOs in the next little while to kind of review a little bit what Matthew and Jen have been looking at the past few months. It did come to the Rockville, Rockville City Council has a, it's a transit task force basically or it's a?
I think it's an advisory.
Advisory committee, it did come to them at their last meeting as well so it is sort of kind of going on in the public now but nobody's committing anybody to this, there's no dollar figures being addressed but it is something that there does seem to be a real need, I know Councilman Jansman, this has been one of your priorities since you first ran for council and this is something that hopefully will come back to council fully, probably early in the new year if things all work out right. Very exciting, very positive conversation with Nancy in North Grenville today as well about the possibility of tying a rundown here into that northern sector as well, both private and public partnerships on this. So it's got real potential for as early as next year but it's still very exploratory and I'm really glad it's on the list because I know Matt spent quite a bit of time with Jen on this and it's got some real potential but we don't have the details yet so just want to make sure everybody's aware of where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Anybody got any questions for Matthew, comments, general comments?
Can I make one, just one, I'll try to really work on this and just I, I just wanted-
That was close.
I know. But I just wanted to mention just the one issue and I'm not trying to be critical on any of this because I think it's a really good process in a lot of ways and I really appreciate the amount of work that's been done to make this more analytical and put some, you know, some meat on the bone. But the one question I will, and I know we can't do this for this year, just take one example, when it's noted repairs and rejuvenation to front end loader, I mean that's great we're having that discussion and it's something we have to talk about but in some ways to me, that's almost one level down from what the first question could be and I hate to bring this up but I know Rockville's doing a zero based budget now and I'm not saying I agree with that process or disagree with it but to me, when you ask that question, do we repair and rejuvenate the front end loader, the first thing I think of is, do we need a front end loader? And that goes back to it's almost a service delivery review, it's a zero based budget where you basically take everything back and decide what you need. And one of the reasons I'm using that for example, because Ray you remember and Lily you would too, members of five, six years ago, we had that comment that came back that we shouldn't replace the loader at the time and we weren't using it enough that it could go for rental. I know that was a discussion, we tended not going down that road but I mean, is that a question that could, I mean logically it could be asked if you want to break it down to what services we deliver, maybe this is part of the modernization study, maybe it's a service delivery review at some point, I'm not suggesting that it be done this year because that is crazy. But I just did want to mention that, that it's a great question to ask about that item and a number of the other items but they always lead me back and this is why I had a really difficult time trying to categorize this and had difficulty with the process last year and this year because it leads me back to the greater questions, do we, should we offer that service, should we have that vehicle, should we, and then that's, I mean that's one of the reasons I think Jason and Rockville is really pitching a zero based budget because you ask those questions, you take everything back kind of to stage one. That's a huge process and I'm not suggesting we do it now but it is something that maybe we could give some thought to after the budget process is done with your recommendations on whether it's service delivery, modernization or something. I just think there's some good questions that could be asked, maybe we save some money, work with other municipalities and just kind of take a fresh look at our operations. We've been doing that since you've been in but maybe there's a way we can all be engaged on that and I just shorted it there anyway. Thanks, Officer.
Actually you make a good point and I do remember when we had the conversation and it was with the former director of public works who told us that, not exact words by any means, that we would get far more use out of a backhoe than a front end loader and that person suggested that we look at buying a new backhoe and forget about a front end loader and a subsequent director of public works two down the road suggests that we buy a backhoe but we still have to front end loader. And it seems to me when we change people in senior positions, each one of them has kind of a different idea of how things should work and based on perhaps their experience at other places, they find that certain things work better than other things and if they happen to be here when the decision is made, well then maybe we go one way or maybe we go a different way. And I've noticed that in the nine years that I've been here that one CAO or CEO or director of public works suggests a particular thing, they leave, the next person comes in suggests a totally different thing and they're here, they're presenting their rationale to us and we go that way but if we'd made the decision the year before or two years before, we'd be totally different. So I don't know what that says other than we need to take a real good look at the suggestions that we're being given and perhaps ask for more information or looking at our neighbors to see whether they have a backhoe and a front end loader or whether we could share or, you know, it's a lot of money to deal with, you just come home and buy a front end loader or a backhoe for four or five thousand bucks, you're talking especially for a hundred and hundreds of thousands of dollars and it's a, it's a piece of equipment that you're looking at eighty, twenty years out so it's an important, it's an important thing, it's like a fire truck at all.
Street sweeper, we had that conversation about as well before we found that down mall.
Yes, we did.
So there is real value to the zero based budget because you did break it down and all that but again, it's a lot for an organization our size to take on so you probably want to throw something at me right now if you bring it up but it is, it just leads to, as the chair said, it leads to a lot of good questions about how we function as an organization and you get away from, you know, new staff who are suggesting things because everything kind of remains at this table for a long discussion. Anyhow, I just had to bring it up because I don't want to seem like I was just being lazy by not finding the survey.
All right, anybody else got anything on the budget? No? Okay, well then I'm going to move along once again, the operations where I was once before but we'll get there again. Council Shankar, I know there's nothing under that tonight, is there anything that you'd love to share with us?
No, I don't think anyone there.
All right. Council Jansman, we hit you so we're going to skip past that, there's nothing under water and wastewater this evening although we were the scheduled meeting of the wastewater management today in December and we now used to pin that on a date.
I was just going to hear about the progress of the permit on, take some work on.
All right, thanks very much. Protective services, Mike's not with us this evening, do you know anything that needs to be brought forward there? The same with council projects though, we've basically been talking about council projects here. Does anybody have any business they want to bring forward?
Just a really quick comment to PSB, we did have a meeting last week and we did talk about some traffic matters that were referred back from council, just wanted to say that OPP traffic officers are looking at the questions that were referred back through council as well so they're looking at that and downtown and also the Edward Street issues with the crosswalk that came up here, so that's on the list.
I noticed I was through there last night and I made a point of looking for that crosswalk that and honestly, I had to look for it because I would've missed it otherwise. I'm in the driving lane and it's over here and it's over here and I'm wondering if perhaps something that's suspended on a cable or there's something larger in the middle of the street is, I share your concern there, I really think a better visibility is required some sort.
A quick suggestion is bright lights and swipe your location because if they went to an LED, apparently that would be strong enough that everybody would see, if that was about the first call, it says North Grenville did that or some of their location area did that, it would be really transformative, so whether, don't be smart and just-
Well, the amount of signage in that area is certainly a concern because the more signs you have, the less attention you pay to any other sign and speaking of signage, I noticed we have one at the foot of the overpass now on town property, the side power industrial park sign between there and that, does Jen ever want to?
Yep.
Should it be?
I don't know, there is a place, some of them that we can have.
All right. Who has this, period for media questions? Not here again. We have no closed sessions so we have no rise of report. I'm going to hear motions for adjournment, Council Young, Council Shankar all in favor. We are adjourned, thank you for joining.